We had arranged it here. All the Janikowskis under the weather.
I gotta key it off there maybe I can find it. No.
Does Senate point give you the presentation tonight?
It's all set up.
Will you send a point giving a presentation?
Uh, I don't know. I know they were supposed to last night. I don't see it here.
Well, good. We can take it after the first of the year.
Are you? I'm sorry, I missed your call.
It's okay. Have you ready?
Still time.
Good evening. I'd like to call and order the City of Joliet Council meeting for December 18th, 2012. We have the invocation will be given this evening by Mr. Jim Howard, the Director of Community Economic Development, after which he will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, Council members. Lord, let us pray. For the grieving families in Connecticut and for all other families who have lost loved ones through tragic circumstances, we offer a moment of silence for their losses.
Thank you very much. During the holiday, we celebrate the birth of the Son of God. Lord, we thank you for his sacrifice and remember that Jesus is the reason for the season. Also, Lord, we ask for your blessings on our leaders. We pray that their decisions are helpful for all of the citizens and that they serve your purpose for all of us. Finally, Lord, we ask that the Christmas spirit of peace, compassion, and understanding continue throughout the rest of the year, and a God bless to all. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Reverend?
Thanks, Reverend. Jim?
Here?
Here.
Here?
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 Microphone?
Is there a motion?
Microphone? Is your microphone on?
Thanks, Tom. Is there a motion that the minutes of the pre-council meeting held on December 30 and the regular meeting held on December 4th stand as recorded?
So moved.
Second.
Motion in seconded to approve, Councilwoman Barber?
Aye.
Councilman Fisher?
Aye.
Councilman Girl?
Aye.
Councilman Hug?
Aye.
Councilman Morris?
Aye.
Councilman Oderkirk?
Aye.
Councilwoman Quillman?
Aye.
Councilman Turk?
Aye.
Mayor Gerani?
Aye.
Motion carried. Next, appointment of Mayor Protem. Is there a motion to appoint Councilman Oderkirk to serve as Mayor Protem, January 1st through March 30th, 2012?
Second.
It's been motioned and seconded to approve, Councilman Fisher?
Aye.
Councilman Girl?
Aye.
Councilman Hug?
I don't know about this.
Councilman Morris?
Aye.
Councilman Oderkirk?
Aye.
Councilwoman Quillman?
Aye.
Councilman Turk?
Aye.
Councilwoman Barber?
Aye.
Mayor Gerani?
Aye.
Motion carried. Next, Council Committee reports, Communication Technology and Information Services.
Nothing to report.
No report?
No.
Well, Dan?
I may.
Go ahead, Councilwoman.
Well, we did meet yesterday, and we went over the, oh, what do you call it, the checklist for things that needed to be fixed here in the city council chambers. And Scott Cancel- is Scott here this evening?
He is.
Scott gave a short presentation, and we'll let him report briefly on the website and other things that we're working on at this point.
Mayor, members of the council, the CTS committee met yesterday afternoon, and we discussed several items, including the council chambers update. I mean, you know, basically, we discussed some of the punch list items in the, you know, for the room in here, as well as, you know, stuff on the website. We also discussed three capital projects that are before you this evening on your agenda. The Automatic Vehicle Location Tracking System, Council number, Council memo number 56212, the Managed PC Replacement Program, Council number number 560-12, and the Renewal of the IT Support Services Contracts, Council memo number 55912. Those are three programs that were discussed at length with the committee. We got unanimous support for those for preparation tonight and recommendation for approval.
And also, we had some feedback from the folks that are working on that, and it's doing, it's lightened the load a little bit, and we're getting further. And then you want to talk about the extra computers as well?
Sure. So, the Managed PC Replacement Program is a program that I introduced that will help bring adequate PCs to all the staff in all departments. Over a five-year period, we're planning to turn about 20% of the assets over every year so that we can make sure that people have the tools they need to do their job. This will be, you know, kind of a new, a new program for the city. Today, we have 425 computers in use throughout the city. More than half, or about half of them, are more than five years old. Some are more than 10 years old. And so what happens is that people become, you know, very, it hurts the way they do their job. They can't be productive. There's a lot more problems that have to be solved, and this program will allow us to basically give them the tools they need to better do their job. We also were able to consider the whole fleet of PCs, the 425 of them, and bid that out to three different vendors, and we ended up achieving a 20% reduction in cost on all of our PCs as a result of that. So we're asking for more support tonight to support 20% of the PCs being turned over year over year, starting this year. It's a $90,000 a year program, $450,000 over the next five years.
Thanks, Scott.
Anything else? Thank you.
Finance Committee report?
Your Honor, the Finance Committee met at 5:45 this evening in the, in the conference room right here next to the council chambers to review the, the committee's comprised of Council, Councilman Hug, Councilman Girl, and myself. Also present was Councilman Morris and Councilwoman Quillman. We approved the minutes for the regular meeting of September 18th and November 20th. Discussed the 2012 tax levy ordinances, which were discussed yesterday. We reviewed the financial report. Staff had estimated a $400,000 surplus through the end of November. It actually, at the end of November, has turned out to be about a $600 surplus in the operating fund, which is good news. We reviewed the personnel summary, the Neighborhood Improvement Program, which is the last report, which is basically nothing because the money's now, the few thousand dollars will be transferred into the general fund. We reviewed the conference travel and seminar expense report, treasuries, disbursements, and regular claims, found them all to be in order, and recommend their approval.
Thank you.
Public Safety Committee report?
Yes, Your Honor, the Public Safety Committee met this evening at 6 o'clock in the board chambers. Items that were discussed, actually, the committee consists of myself, Councilman Oderkirk and Councilman Morris, Councilman Quillman and Councilman Hug were also in attendance. The items that were discussed, we discussed the purchase of a second fire engine. We purchased, maybe two or three months ago, I believe it was, a, a fire engine. The Chief Formhall informed us, and we had actually talked about it a couple months ago, and it is in the 2013 capital improvement, or capital budget of acquiring an additional fire engine. This fire engine retails for $477,000. However, we were able to achieve an approximate $40,000 savings due to the fact that we've already purchased one, and they're both going to be going in for detailing at the same time. And again, this is in our 2013, budgeted in our 2013 capital budget. That, that item is on our agenda tonight, and it's item five, Council memo 561-12. In addition, we talked about, we discussed the purchase of a replacement tornado siren in, at Station 8. The siren, this replacement of the tornado siren is Council memo 571-12. It's on our agenda tonight. The siren cost the city about $26,000. The reason for the replacement is that the siren was installed in 1989 and basically has significant wear and tear on it. We also discussed the purchase, the Chief of Police, Mike Trappin, discussed purchase of tasers. We're going to be purchasing 31 tasers. After this purchase, the chief informed us that every officer will have a taser. The chief also mentioned to us, to the committee, that having all the officers with tasers saves lives. Not only officers' lives, but also the perpetrators' lives in some of the situations that they go into where they don't have to use deadly force where they may have had to without a taser. So the committee unanimously supported this. It is on our agenda tonight, Council memo 563-12. The purchase of the tasers is going to be covered by a federal grant, at least everything with the exception of $6,000, which is budgeted for in the corporate fund. The last item that we discussed was an item with Chief Formhall as it relates to a new fire list and possibly some new requirements. This item's going to be brought back to the Finance Committee, or, sorry, to the Public Safety Committee after Chief Formhall gave us some reading material. But one of the items that was discussed was requiring that new firefighters be certified paramedics prior to their hire. The chief explained to us that this could save the City of Joliet possibly between $35,000 and $40,000 by having firefighters certified as paramedics. Nothing has been decided. It's up for further discussion on the Safety Committee, but it was brought up, and we do have some information to read through. And that concludes my report.
Councilman, the first two items, did you just take a position on that? I know you mentioned the tasers. You voted unanimously.
We certainly did.
You did?
We approved it.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Public Service Committee report?
Your Honor, the Public Service Committee comprised of Councilwoman Barber, Councilman Fisher, and myself, met down in the planning room at 7:15 this morning to review the contracts, change orders, pay estimates, final payments found, and will all to be in order, and recommend their approval.
Here's a request to move up the proclamation for this evening. The proclamation is declaring the week of January 1st, 2013, as Smoke-Free Illinois Week. Jenny Blair with the Will County Health Department is here to accept the award.
I will tell you, Jenny, and I'll tell the rest of the folks watching, the irony's not lost on me. I'm the only smoker.
Oh.
But I do not smoke in my house. I do not smoke around my family, and I encourage people to quit, since my parents are, or family are encouraging me, or at least not do it around other folks.
I'm an ex-smoker, so I know how you feel.
It's a, it's a struggle.
Yes.
Now, I will read the proclamation for you. Whereas secondhand smoke is a major health hazard, and whereas there is no risk-free level of exposure to secondhand smoke, and whereas approximately 50,000 deaths each year are attributable to secondhand smoke exposure according to the U.S. Surgeon General, the Center for Disease Control and Prevention, and the National Cancer Institute, and whereas separate areas, air cleaning or ventilation does not eliminate exposure to secondhand smoke, and whereas smoke-free policies are the most economic and effective protection from exposure to secondhand smoke, and whereas smoke-free laws provide immediate health benefits, most notably a decline in heart attack hospitalizations, and whereas the Smoke-Free Illinois Act is celebrating its five-year anniversary on January 1st, 2013, and whereas the Smoke-Free Illinois Act protects all citizens regardless of where they work or play, now therefore, I, Thomas Gerani, Mayor of the City of Joliet, on behalf of the Joliet City Council, do hereby proclaim the week of January 1st, 2013, Smoke-Free Illinois Week in Joliet to remind the public about the benefits of protecting everyone from the health risks associated with secondhand smoke and the importance of prohibiting smoking in all public places and workplaces. Signed, Mayor Thomas Gerani. All the rest of the smokers and myself just quit, and we won't have to deal with this anymore, right?
Mayor?
Yes.
If we could go back just a minute to public safety, Bob and I were supposed to make a comment after, about the public safety meeting, about the truck traffic that we've been receiving lots of phone calls on.
Okay.
And myself and Mr. Oderkirk have received many phone calls. So I, we do have an ordinance in place, but it's not a strict ordinance. So I ran it by our attorney, Mr. Plyman, and then Chief Trappin did some more research on it, and also Mike Botsum, and they gave us a map, and they showed us the truck routes, and lots of these 18-wheelers are going through our residential neighborhoods. And it's very hard to enforce right now, and, because you, you put a truck sign up, and then they go down another street, and it just seems to exacerbate the situation. So, chief is going to look into it further, and there's some device that possibly could go into effect, and he's going to look at this and bring it back to the public safety. You said January, John?
Yes.
Yeah, back in January. So they'll probably eliminate a lot of that truck traffic, not only in the residential neighborhoods, but also down in 53 and around by Center Point, where these trucks that are overweight are trying to bypass everything. And it's a matter of public safety. So I appreciate John putting that on the agenda, and I know Mike and, Mike and Mike, Chief, and we put a lot of work into looking at that. So just let the citizens know, we are working on it. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you.
No, no.
All right.
Just, having been a smoker and having tried to quit three times, one time for a year and went back, I know how tough it is. But it's been 26 years for me, so you'll feel a lot better.
Next is agenda items and reports. Council memo 546-12 was approved at yesterday's pre-council meeting. Next is the Treasurer's Report for October 2012. It is recommended this report be received and placed on file.
So moved.
Second.
It's been motioned and seconded to approve, Councilman Girl?
Aye.
Councilman Hug?
Aye.
Councilman Morris?
Aye.
Councilman Oderkirk?
Aye.
Councilwoman Quillman?
Aye.
Councilman Turk?
Aye.
Councilwoman Barber?
Aye.
Councilman Fisher?
Aye.
Mayor Gerani?
Aye.
Under ordinances and resolutions, Council memo 547-12, an ordinance approving an intergovernmental agreement with Joliet School District 86 requesting the transfer of certain real property and a resolution approving an agreement for the development of an early learning center at 500 Parks Avenue. It is recommended said ordinance and resolution be adopted.
So moved.
Second. Questions?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Mr. McHugh is present. If you'd like to say a few words to the council on behalf of One Hope United.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, thank you for considering this project and for giving me a couple of minutes to talk about One Hope United. We're a 117-year-old nonprofit organization here in Illinois, and provide a wide variety of services, foster care, counseling, programs to keep youth out of the detention system, and early childhood education in a pretty significant way. In fact, we, for the, for the past 15 years or so, we provide, we've had an office in Joliet doing foster care work here. This is really going to be a great addition to the community. We're, our proposal will create an early education center for a little more than 200 kids at the former Park School. This will be a renovation, of course, and will be serving children ages birth through age 5 on a full-time basis, and as well as an after-school program for kids who are 6 to 12 years old. Joliet in particular is a very high need for childcare services for low-income families, and is why we chose to propose a program here in this city. You may remember I was here a year ago in September when we first submitted the application to the state of Illinois for a grant, a capital grant for this purpose. And about two weeks ago, we were notified that we were awarded a grant of $3.1 million. And in fact, the governor is going to announce the entire early childhood capital grant program tomorrow in Cicero. I'll, I'll be present and have an opportunity to speak at that event and mention this project as well. The entire cost of the project will probably be about a million dollars more than that grant. It's our intention, and in fact, we've begun the fundraising efforts to make up the difference. We'll use that and/or financing to make that happen. And once this process is finished here, then we'll complete our board process and hopefully get things going, well, certainly as soon as possible. Be happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Mayor, what's, what's your timetable on the development part of it?
You know, these, we've done a number of development projects over the years. The whole project, a hope, a project like this will typically take about two years to complete. So maybe two years from this coming spring, if we're fortunate, maybe we'll be able to open the fall prior to that. That's approximate.
Just a comment. Thank you for selecting Joliet. I think it's a, it's a great reuse of a wonderful historic school on the east side of Joliet, and it's gonna, gonna bring new life to that whole neighborhood. And thank you to Alfredo Molecio. I remember Alfredo when you first spoke about this possible project, and you were looking for possi-, alternative sites where it could work, and it seems like a perfect fit for, for both your program and for the City of Joliet. So congratulations.
Thank you very much. And Alfredo really has been a great partner throughout this process.
Anyone else?
Thank you.
It's been motioned and seconded to approve, Councilman Hug?
Aye.
Councilman Morris?
Aye.
Councilman Oderkirk?
Aye.
Councilwoman Quillman?
Just a quick comment. As a member of the original Quality Life Task Force for Districts 4 and 5, and Alfredo was part of that as well, this is one of the key objectives, and it's, it's, it's wonderful to finally see it coming to fruition. So thank you very much for doing this, and I'll vote aye.
Councilman Turk?
Aye.
Councilwoman Barber?
Aye.
Councilman Fisher?
Aye.
Councilman Girl?
Aye.
Mayor Gerani?
Aye.
Motion carried. Council memo 548-12, ordinance approving a vacation of a 7-foot-by-16-foot portion of a 10-foot-wide public utility and drainage easement located at 103 Barney Drive. It is recommended said ordinance be denied.
So moved.
Second. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Mr. and Mrs. Rodriguez are present this evening. If, I don't know if they would like to address the council, but it would be appropriate if they wanted to do that, that this would be the time.
You?
I think it's, it looks like they're here to hear the vote.
So, just so I'm clear, the motion is to deny?
That is correct. Our recommendation is consistent with that of the Plan Commission, and it's to recommend denial of the vacation of the utility and drainage easement in the rear yard.
Mr.?
Mayor?
Yes.
Tom, it says ordinance approving.
Right.
A vacation. The recommendation's to deny, but the ordinance has worded that we're voting whether to approve it or not?
I can respond to that.
Go ahead.
Traditionally, when council items are presented to the council where there is a denial recommendation, it's always possible that the council would disagree with the recommendation and would proceed with an approval. In that event, we need an approval document. You really don't need a denial document. So there's always an ordinance or some sort of approval document on the chance that there would be an approval.
Just so I'm clear, so I know how I'm voting. Are we voting, does an aye vote mean that you're voting to approve the ordinance?
No.
Or an aye vote mean that you're voting to deny the ordinance?
The motion was to deny, and aye vote would concur in the motion, and would be a vote to deny.
Thank you.
Excuse me. My, mine says recommendation of the administration is to deny.
No, the, the title, the ordinance approving a variation.
But the ordinance is approving it. That, that's, was the reason for my question. I wanted to make sure that the motion wasn't in the affirmative. It's basically to deny. So an aye vote is to deny.
Right.
I think it's the, the agenda, the green agenda that has, and it will be on your iPads, as an ordinance approving, that should be, or the, our recommendation is clearly to deny the request for the vacation of the easement. So we'll clarify that in the future so we can indicate what the recommendation is on this type of a situation.
Thank you. Mr.?
It's been motioned and seconded to deny, Councilman Morris?
Aye.
Councilman Oderkirk?
Aye.
Councilwoman Quillman?
I just want to comment for the record for the folks that weren't here yesterday. We did discuss this at length, and because this was done without a permit and any inspections, you could have saved yourself a lot of grief knowing in the beginning that you weren't able to build such a structure on an easement. So for those reasons, I have to vote aye to deny.
Councilman Turk?
Aye.
Councilwoman Barber?
Aye.
Councilman Fisher?
Aye.
Councilman Girl?
Aye.
Councilman Hug?
Aye.
Mayor Gerani?
Aye.
Motion denied. Council memo 549-12, ordinance approving a variation of use to allow continuation of a two-unit residence and a single-family residence in R4 multi-family residential use in an R2 single-family residential district located at 419-14, I'm sorry, 1419-1421 East Washington Street. It is recommended said ordinance be adopted.
So moved.
Second.
Questions? Mr.?
It's been motioned and seconded to approve, Councilman Oderkirk?
Aye.
Councilwoman Quillman?
Aye.
Councilman Turk?
Aye.
Councilwoman Barber?
Aye.
Councilman Fisher?
Aye.
Councilman Girl?
Aye.
Councilman Hug?
Aye.
Councilman Morris?
Aye.
Mayor Gerani?
Aye.
Motion carried. Council memo 550-12, ordinance declaring certain properties as public nuisances. It is recommended said ordinance be adopted.
So moved.
Second.
Mr.?
It's been motioned and seconded to approve, Councilwoman Quillman?
Aye.
Councilman Turk?
Aye.
Councilwoman Barber?
Aye.
Councilman Fisher?
Aye.
Councilman Girl?
Aye.
Councilman Hug?
Aye.
Councilman Morris?
Aye.
Councilman Oderkirk?
Aye.
Mayor Gerani?
Aye.
Motion carried. Council memo 551-12, an ordinance for the levying and assessment of taxes for the fiscal year beginning January 1st, 2012, and ending December 31st, 2012, in and for the City of Joliet, including the Joliet Public Library. It is recommended said ordinance be adopted.
So moved.
Second.
Comments, Tom?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this is the official ordinance that levies real estate taxes. It's consistent with the budget that the mayor and city council approved at our last city council meeting. It does not raise the total amount of the tax levy from where it was last year. It's the same as last year.
Thank you. Mr.?
It's been motioned and seconded to approve, Councilman Turk?
Aye.
Councilwoman Barber?
Aye.
Councilman Fisher?
Aye.
Councilman Girl?
Aye.
Councilman Hug?
Aye.
Councilman Morris?
Aye.
Councilman Oderkirk?
Aye.
Councilwoman Quillman?
Aye.
Councilman Turk?
Aye.
Mayor Gerani?
Aye.
Motion carried. Council memo 552-12, ordinances for the levying and assessment of taxes for the fiscal year beginning January 1st, 2012, and ending December 31st, 2012, in and for the 1994 Joliet Special Service Area Number 1, Joliet Common Shopping Center Project, the 1996 Joliet Special Service Area Number 14, Joliet City Center, and 2009 Joliet Special Service Area Number 7, Park Hill Subdivision. It is recommended said ordinances be adopted.
So moved. Second.
Any questions, comments? This was reviewed in depth yesterday. Any questions?
Mr.?
It's been motioned and seconded to approve, Councilwoman Barber?
Aye.
Councilman Fisher?
Aye.
Councilman Girl?
Aye.
Councilman Hug?
Aye.
Councilman Morris?
Aye.
Councilman Oderkirk?
Aye.
Councilwoman Quillman?
Aye.
Councilman Turk?
Aye.
Mayor Gerani?
Aye.
Motion carried. Council memo 499-12, ordinance approving amendment to Chapter 7, bicycles, Chapter 17, junk and secondhand dealers, Chapter 18, Article 5, pawnbrokers, and Article 1 fees of the Joliet Code of Ordinances, and creating new regulations for antique dealers, itinerant merchants, junk dealers, junk peddlers, pawnbrokers, and secondhand dealers, and to enter into an agreement with leads online for the online tracking software. It is recommended said ordinance be tabled.
So moved.
Mayor?
Yes.
Before we table, I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
Tom, how did that meeting go? I was not able to make that.
It was a productive meeting. The revised ordinance will be submitted to all of the people that are affected by it, and they'll have another opportunity to comment on it. And what I would recommend is not necessarily tabling it to a specific meeting. What we'll do is just remove it from the agenda with your permission, and then when it's ready to come back to you, we'll put it on an agenda. So we, if, if we needed some more time to
Aye.
Councilman Hug.
Aye.
Councilman Morris.
Aye.
Councilman Oderkirk.
Aye.
Mayor Gerani.
Aye.
Motion carried. Council memo 499-12, ordinance approving amendment to Chapter 7, bicycles, Chapter 17, junk and secondhand dealers, Chapter 18, Article 5, pawnbrokers and Article 1 fees of the Joliet Code of Ordinances, and creating new regulations for antique dealers, itinerant merchants, junk dealers, junk peddlers, pawnbrokers, and secondhand dealers, and to enter into an agreement with leads online for the online tracking software. It is recommended said ordinance be tabled.
Mayor, before we table, I have a couple of questions. Tom, how did that meeting go? I was not able to make that.
It was a productive meeting. The revised ordinance will be submitted to all of the people that are affected by it, and they'll have another opportunity to comment on it. And what I would recommend is not necessarily tabling it to a specific meeting. What we'll do is just remove it from the agenda with your permission, and then when it's ready to come back to you, we'll put it on an agenda. So we, if we needed some more time to keep working with the businesses, we'll have that time.
And I do have one other question, unless I miss this. What about the cash-for-gold stores? Does that affect those as well?
Yes, I, I think they're, they're regulated by it, right.
They would be regulated by it.
Okay, because I didn't see that in the memo, and that's why I was, I didn't know what category they would come under.
I think that's a secondhand dealer under our ordinance.
That would they come under?
Because they're buying used merchandise or secondhand merchandise.
Okay, thank you.
So you would like a motion?
Just to table and then, you know.
Or just to remove it from the agenda?
I would remove it from the agenda, and that way, we don't have it on the agenda repeatedly until it's ready to come back to you.
I'll move to remove Council memo 499-12 from the agenda.
I'll second that.
Just a quick comment. I was at the meeting, and it got a little heated at the beginning, but Chief, you handled it very well. I know you were starting to get a little edgy, but, and there was some changes made for the coin dealers, et cetera, so I had to leave because I had another deal, but, in fact, I need to talk to you, see how it ended up, because I had to leave early, so.
Actually, Mayor, we're close. I think the only thing left is our scrap dealers and meeting with both of their major scrap dealers the first of the year.
Okay, all right, thank you.
It's been motioned and seconded to remove Council memo 499-12 from the agenda. Councilman Fisher.
Aye.
Councilman Gurrel.
Aye.
Councilman Hug.
Aye.
Councilman Morris.
Aye.
Councilman Oderkirk.
Aye.
Councilwoman Coleman.
Aye.
Councilman Turk.
Aye.
Councilwoman Barber.
Aye.
Councilman Fisher.
Aye.
Councilman Gurrel.
Aye.
Councilman Hug.
Aye.
Mayor Gerani.
Aye.
Next, bids and contracts. Award of contracts. Council memo 559-12, approve annual contract for information technology support services. Council memo 560-12, award a contract for a managed PC replacement program. Council memo 561-12, purchase 1E12 fire engine for the fire department. Council memo 562-12, enter into a professional services agreement for a GPS AVL system for the roadways division vehicles. Council memo 563-12, purchase TASER devices. Council memo 564-12, award a contract for the blended phosphate solution purchase 2013. Council memo 565-12, award a contract for the manganese sulfate purchase 2013. Council memo 566-12, award a contract for the 2013 sodium hypochlorite solution purchase. Council memo 567-12, award a contract for the 2013 sodium permanganate solution purchase. Council memo 568-12, approve public utilities electrical maintenance services contract 2013. Council memo 569-12, approve extension of the optional 2013 term for the biosolids disposal contract. Council memo 570-12, award a contract for the Jefferson Street Water Main Improvement Project 2012, and Council memo 571-12, purchase one replacement tornado siren. It is recommended Council memos 559-12 through 571-12 be approved.
So moved.
Second.
It's been motioned and seconded to approve. Councilman Oderkirk.
Aye.
Councilwoman Coleman.
Aye.
Councilman Turk.
Aye.
Councilwoman Barber.
Aye.
Councilman Fisher.
Aye.
Councilman Gurrel.
Aye.
Councilman Hug.
Aye.
Councilman Morris.
Aye.
Mayor Gerani.
Aye.
Motion carried. Next, amendments, change orders and payments. Council memo 573-12, change order number one and payout number five and final for the 2012 Streetscape Crowley Avenue. Council memo 574-12, change order number two for the 63 South Ottawa Street parking lot. Council memo 575-12, payment for emergency bypass connection at West Park Lift Station. Council memo 576-12, approve change order number one and payment request number two for the Fall Creek-Stone Creek Public Improvements Project 2012. Council memo 577-12, approve change order number one and payment number 10 for the 2012 biosolids contract. Council memo 578-12, approve payment number 21 and final for design services for the Transportation Center V08. Council memo 579-12, approve payment of two vehicle purchases for the Tri-County Auto Theft Unit. It is recommended Council memos 573-12 through 579-12 be approved.
So moved.
Second.
It's been motioned and seconded to approve. Councilwoman Coleman.
Aye.
Councilman Turk.
Aye.
Councilwoman Barber.
Aye.
Councilman Fisher.
Aye.
Councilman Gurrel.
Aye.
Councilman Hug.
Aye.
Councilman Morris.
Aye.
Councilman Oderkirk.
Aye.
Councilwoman Coleman.
Aye.
Councilman Turk.
Aye.
Councilwoman Barber.
Aye.
Councilman Fisher.
Aye.
Councilman Gurrel.
Aye.
Councilman Hug.
Aye.
Councilman Morris.
Aye.
Councilman Oderkirk.
Aye.
Councilwoman Coleman.
Aye.
Councilman Turk.
Aye.
Councilman Hug.
Aye.
Mayor Gerani.
Aye.
Next, bids and contracts. Award of contracts. Council memo 559-12, approve annual contract for information technology support services. Council memo 560-12, award a contract for a managed PC replacement program. Council memo 561-12, purchase 1E12 fire engine for the fire department. Council memo 562-12, enter into a professional services agreement for a GPS AVL system for the roadways division vehicles. Council memo 563-12, purchase TASER devices. Council memo 564-12, award a contract for the blended phosphate solution purchase 2013. Council memo 565-12, award a contract for the manganese sulfate purchase 2013. Council memo 566-12, award a contract for the 2013 sodium hypochlorite solution purchase. Council memo 567-12, award a contract for the 2013 sodium permanganate solution purchase. Council memo 568-12, approve public utilities electrical maintenance services contract 2013. Council memo 569-12, approve extension of the optional 2013 term for the biosolids disposal contract. Council memo 570-12, award a contract for the Jefferson Street Water Main Improvement Project 2012, and Council memo 571-12, purchase one replacement tornado siren. It is recommended Council memos 559-12 through 571-12 be approved.
So moved.
Second.
It's been motioned and seconded to approve. Councilman Oderkirk.
Aye.
Councilwoman Coleman.
Aye.
Councilman Turk.
Aye.
Councilwoman Barber.
Aye.
Councilman Fisher.
Aye.
Councilman Gurrel.
Aye.
Councilman Hug.
Aye.
Councilman Morris.
Aye.
Mayor Gerani.
Aye.
Motion carried. Next, amendments, change orders and payments. Council memo 573-12, change order number one and payout number five and final for the 2012 Streetscape Crowley Avenue. Council memo 574-12, change order number two for the 63 South Ottawa Street parking lot. Council memo 575-12, payment for emergency bypass connection at West Park Lift Station. Council memo 576-12, approve change order number one and payment request number two for the Fall Creek-Stone Creek Public Improvements Project 2012. Council memo 577-12, approve change order number one and payment number 10 for the 2012 biosolids contract. Council memo 578-12, approve payment number 21 and final for design services for the Transportation Center V08. Council memo 579-12, approve payment of two vehicle purchases for the Tri-County Auto Theft Unit. It is recommended Council memos 573-12 through 579-12 be approved.
So moved.
Second.
It's been motioned and seconded to approve. Councilwoman Coleman.
Aye.
Councilman Turk.
Aye.
Councilwoman Barber.
Aye.
Councilman Fisher.
Aye.
Councilman Gurrel.
Aye.
Councilman Hug.
Aye.
Councilman Morris.